All right. It's seven o'clock, and it's shortly thereafter. So we'll open the planning board meeting. Our first item on the agenda, a minor subdivision, Dog Harbor Road. There's someone here who wishes to speak on this, either for or against? All right. There being no one, we will adjourn. We will close that public hearing. Our next item is a public hearing on a major subdivision for Timber Banks Phase 4, Section 10, and 44 lots. Do I have the folder on that, Karen, or the short form? We have to do a short form seeker before we can open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm not mistaken, there was some question as to whether or not we needed to do a seeker for this?
Yes.
And could you maybe explain why we do or why we thought we didn't?
Well, we had a great deal of discussion with the engineer and with our attorney. And we did not feel that we had to repeat a long form EAF because the original one covered everything, and we didn't want to get into segmentation. After a review of all the documentation, our attorney indicated that she would prefer that we just do a short form seeker for this and not repeat the long form. So that's the process we're following. All right. Will the proposed action create a material conflict within adopted land use plan of zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land? No, not in a material way. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. You have no CEAs. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? There wasn't update done for traffic.
Yes, they did do new traffic counts. We have not gotten the final report yet, but new traffic counts and trip generation models have it.
And they show no material impact?
Impact, yes.
Okay. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate recently available conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact? It will obviously impact, but only in a small way, public or private water supplies, public or private wastewater. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, e.g., wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality? No. There was a updated mapping of the wetlands also, and this shows no intrusion into wetlands at all. It's within the original approval.
Correct.
Yep. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask our engineers one question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
On three lots, it looks like the sewer easement extends onto private property very awkwardly. One of them is a very small little jive. Any reason for that?
So, as you know, this is a CHA project, so I'm kind of keeping it at arm's length. Jason Hoy, the Murren engineer, reviewed the set of plans. Which lots are you talking about? Lots seven?
Twenty-six, twenty-six, seven, and on three, there's this little dog leg there that...
And it's due to the... To keep separation between the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer because you've got that arc radius. Without putting a bunch of structures in, you have to cut through the side and front yard setbacks of those lawns to keep separation between the sanitary and storm sewer that's there.
All right. Thank you.
So, Jack, you have to... The board... We don't have a resolution for it because we didn't know we were going to do the short form. The board has to appoint themselves lead agency.
Oh, yeah.
And then if you go to the Stumpbusters, Oswego Road, you can read that. It's the same resolution. And then do the short form resolution.
For this one?
Yeah, just change the name.
Tim Timberbanks.
Mm-hmm. Just resolve that the planning board, having followed the prescribed seeker regulations and having reviewed, no comments to the contrary, hereby designate itself as lead agency. And then we'll need a motion on that.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, that's the normal procedure, I think. All right. We will now open the public hearing.
Well, you need another resolution to find the unlisted action.
Do you want to go ahead and meet it, Karen?
We solve that, having reviewed the seeker regulations, determine this is an unlisted action. Having reviewed the short environmental assessment form and finding no significant or adverse impacts resulting from the Timber Banks subdivision, the planning board issues a negative declaration.
I vote the resolution as worded by Karen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, we got to go, Karen.
Yep. Now you can open the hearing for the public comments.
All right. We'll now open the public hearing for the Timber Banks Phase 4, Section 10, 44 lot subdivision. Would you care to make an overview presentation?
So, I'm Matt Merrill, and CHA consulting here on behalf of the Timbers LLC. So this is the next phase, Phase 4, Section 10 of Timber Banks as part of their overall master plan. This will include 44 lots, stormwater pond located here. You can see I overlaid on this map the updated wetlands. At this point, the wetland scientist only had the GPS points. He's finalizing their fourth. So we'll provide that to the board once complete. But I want to show you guys that there are no impacts. I guess that's really all I've got, just the next phase to move forward, sell more lots.
Lot six does extend into the wetland. Is that correct?
It does, yes. Just like many in the early phases.
So I would just assume in the sale of that lot, it would be defined at that lot?
And this was included, at least in the gross numbers of the original approval of this project?
Yes.
Because this is just a modification within the overall numbers of the type of size of lot versus what was originally planned.
Yes, this is a modification to what was originally laid out.
But it's consistent and within what we've already approved.
And was that previous approval, 44 lot? So there was...
No. The overall development was approved with 665 lots. And at 468, they have to do a full traffic study. So right now, there's 393 lots built and sold 44 more as well under the 665 allowed total.
It's a good way of saying we're going to see these guys a few more times.
Yes.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this? Yes, please.
Barbara Raymond from 3409 Patchett Road. Raymond Laprise, sorry. I'm opposed to this with the fact that they haven't really done the traffic study on all of the ancillary roads that feed into this and the amount of traffic this is going to additionally include in the area. That's a potential 88, at least, new cars in the area. You've already got at least 100 and some odd cars coming in from the Timber Tree and the new area that they're putting in there. The amount of traffic that's hitting the five corners is getting to be extraordinary. And the lack of, shall we say, control by those drivers is also ridiculous. People are speeding through the intersection. People are doing Patchett Road at 60 miles an hour. It's ridiculous. And adding these all these lots in is ridiculous. I don't know how you can actually do this seeker thing with saying that the traffic study's been done when there hasn't been a new traffic study and you don't have the results. It's crazy to see that. Plus, you have people in the middle of the roads. There's no sidewalks for anybody to walk on in that area whatsoever. I just tried to come through there to see where they're parking for this parade of homes. And there are people up and down the road on Timber Tree or whatever the name of that one is. And it's just filled with people because there's no place they can walk because the lots are so narrow, there's no place for sidewalks. There has to be something done to put sidewalks in there. The only place you have sidewalks is on the entry road. That's it. Nowhere else do you have sidewalks, anywhere in that development. You're filling that development up with a whole lot of people, and you don't have any place to put the traffic. Plus, you're also pushing all the animals out besides. And I know because they're in my backyard.
Well, I think in regards to sidewalks, it's not a town policy to have sidewalks through our subdivisions. And we don't require it, right? There's no code requirement for it. So it becomes a preference of the developers to whether or not they want to put sidewalks on. And most choose not to. Now, it becomes a personal preference as to whether or not someone living in a neighborhood prefers a sidewalk or not. Because in most communities, a sidewalk becomes the responsibility of the property owner. And in this case, you know, property owners would be obligated to clear snow and to maintain those sidewalks. It seems odd, but that is the way the New York State law works. I believe for village law at least. I think it's same for town law as well. So sidewalks come, you know, that double-edged sword. It's difficult. And personally, I like sidewalks, but it's not a personal matter. It's a matter as to whether or not this developer wants it and sees that it's of value to the people who would be purchasing these homes. They make those decisions. Regarding traffic, I do agree that we need to be considering traffic. However, I assume long-term traffic studies back 15 years ago evaluated 665 lots. Is that not the case? I mean, we're not increasing this any larger than what it was intended to be on its original approval many years ago.
It's also added YMCA with people flying through there trying to get to the Y because they're five minutes late.
Well, it's not this planning board's objective to try to control the individual who drive their vehicles. I mean, we have no control over that. The traffic study would not even include the fact that people would drive inappropriately or irresponsibly.
But you have a huge increase in traffic in 15 years.
Yeah, that's all it evaluates, is the increase in traffic.
And if you did the study at all during COVID, you had so little traffic. And that's the only time I've seen anyone doing traffic studies up there. You have five corners there all coming together, and you have trouble. You have the Collington Point expansion over there. That road was never properly improved, Patchett Road. It was never done right. And you have all that excess traffic. It's hitting river. It's hitting everywhere. And the traffic is getting to be ridiculous over there. And you add all these additional homes, and you have more and more traffic.
Well, inadvertently, there's more traffic. As we develop the community, there's more traffic. I guess the question becomes as to whether or not that traffic presents a problem. Now, even at peak times, I don't know what the queue is at the five corners. I would dare say it's never more than eight cars.
I've seen worse.
Maybe. I mean, I'm pretty familiar with it.
I know you are. Someone's blocked the road too.
But yes. So I believe it's a concern. I think... But I would have to go. So there was a traffic study, though, originally. So this new traffic study, we are pending some results.
Yes, and they did traffic counts in 2023 for what would be the full traffic study with, once we got above the 468. This 44 lot still is under 468. So the full traffic study isn't required. However, the developer did offer to prepare a traffic study for these 44 lots added in at this time. But it really is not part of the requirements of the GPP for the project because this does not reach the 468 lots that triggers the next traffic study. So the next phase will require a full traffic study for full build-out again with new traffic counts.
And that next phase would be required, and it's based on the traffic under current conditions with the additional development that has occurred since the original study was done.
Yeah, so you have more new background data past what was done when the YMCA was put in in 2015, I believe.
My only comment to the public would be is that we do watch traffic, and we are conscious of the fact that development results in traffic. We have to match the rights of property owners to develop their property as they see fit in a manner that's in compliance with our code. At the same time, while monitoring whether or not we think traffic is getting to the point where it's disruptive to the general public. I don't think 44 more lots is going to do that. That's my personal opinion. But I hear what you're saying. There's more traffic because of all the other development as well as what these 44 lots will bring. And I'll take that under consideration when I review the project. That's your comment, and I watch and acknowledge your consideration.
My name is Cindy Woods. I'm from 3620 Patchett Road, further down. And I just want to add, in that study, could you also consider future road construction? You know, whether there will be new roads or extension roads or emergency roads or anything like that? Maybe that was in the original. But, you know, is that something to consider, too?
We would only consider roads that the developer is presenting to us. If we were to see a development that we thought was inappropriate or unsafe or presented a condition that needed additional roads or additional connectors, we may take that into consideration. But generally, we don't say we'd like to see a road here if they don't present it.
But you may take it into consideration if it was warranted. That's good.
That's something that could be considered, yes.
Mary Bill from also Patchett Road, 3592 Patchett. I rode. I'm on the dead end along with you and Cindy and Lynn and you, yes. And it just doesn't... It feels like it's narrow because I have, you know, constantly passing dump trucks now because they have an area where there are some tractor trailers that they dunk dirt and they dump debris. And they bury it and dump more stuff. And it's just... I'm concerned about the traffic because of that. I walk my dogs. And I have one dog right now. I walk her, and we go up on the berm on the one side to get away from the traffic. But it's just a little bit of a concern for, you know, what is to come with more dump trucks and that sort of thing.
That's really not a concern for this board. I mean, honestly. However, there's no reason why you couldn't bring that to the attention of our highway department and raise the question as to whether or not this particular road is continuing to serve its current needs. But it's not something that we would review based on particularly this development or other work that may be taking place within Timber Banks.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, sir. Mike Scherr from 4092 Cortina Road, the other side, not on Patchett. Got a couple of concerns. Hopefully, they're minor for the board to consider. There's a few developments in this town that, for the fire department, the location of hydrants meet the requirement but are not the best for the fire service. And as a new development potentially could be built before the infrastructure is completed, I'd love to sit with the board or whoever sets those up to make it user-friendly for the fire service. It's a bill or a fee that gets thrown in to whoever purchased the property down the road. I know my development, Clinton Heights, all the hydrants meet the requirements. But by far, they are not user-friendly for the 250, 300 homes. You'd have a beautiful setup of hydrant system. And who looks at hydrant systems? For eight more hydrants, everybody would have been better protected. So I'm trying to encourage future development to at least take care of that in the beginning. So is it possible? I'm not sure. I'm just stumbling across this now, how far you are in the infrastructure. If I could sit with somebody and possibly discuss that.
Sure. You know, Aqua, obviously, developers don't want to pay for any more hydrants, and they have to.
But they don't eat the cost. They pass it out.
I get it. But they pay for it upfront. So with that being said, we always welcome input from the fire departments. We actually used to have a gentleman from Belton Cold Springs that came to every meeting and would review plans and give us feedback. I don't know if Bill's not with you guys anymore.
He is. He's very busy.
Okay. I mean, if you want to take Bill's place...
I've got a feeling I'm going to be in here.
If you'd like to take Bill's place, by all means, we welcome input from the fire districts on how that stuff is laid out. So by all means, we'll make sure Karen has your contact information, and we'll make sure we forward plans long-term.
I appreciate that. And a slight thing on the roads. I hate the private drives. I don't know who this Mr. Private is. But they're terrible for the fire service. They're not built for our fire trucks. They're narrow, or they don't hold the weight. And you're leaving it to the homeowners to keep them up. Our town highway department does a phenomenal job, but they don't touch those roads. I'd like to see those eliminated. But that may be the highway department that sets that up?
The town board function.
Okay. The other thing with the narrow roads, I know for Timber Banks and River Knoll, they've got these nice little islands as you go on in. The fire trucks that I... That protect my district. Every time they go down there, those branches on the trucks, I was minor. Scratch the trucks. That paint is not the normal paint that is on everybody's personal vehicle. It's extremely expensive. I don't mind the islands, but I don't know if this board, another board, can control what they put in them. And even going from Timber Banks back to the clubhouse, it's almost okay to drive on during the summer until the branches get out there. But then you're driving on the shoulder with a fire truck. Throw some snow out there, makes it worse. I think I'm kind of out. Somebody overhears. The roads are too narrow.
Those are especially narrow.
Just food for thought. I will pass my contact info to Mrs. Rice for future, hopefully.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing. Next item is approval of minutes. Everyone had a chance to read what Karen sent out, both for the July meeting and the August meeting?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that...
You want to do them together or separately?
No, we're doing them separately, yeah. Because you and I have to explain it. Make a motion that we approve the minutes of our July 11 meeting as presented by the secretary.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I make a motion that we accept the August 8 planning board minutes as presented by the secretary.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained?
Aye.
All right. Minor subdivision. Forgive me. How do you pronounce that last name? See anyone here?
Artuzuski.
Mike Barticezki, but it looks like he lost.
Artuzuski.
Artuzuski.
Close enough.
Close enough. I wish you'd have given me some pointers.
Karen, you want to pull one?
First time I saw it.
I took a figure out. For this one? Probably put a map up on the board. You have to turn it out.
Yeah. We have one. Four's in here. I thought this was all Timber Banks.
I think it is.
It is Timber Banks, I think.
You can give him one of yours. She had Barticezki right there.
I got the smaller.
Mm-hmm. That's fine. That's all Heather.
Oh, she only created a small one?
Yes.
Yeah. Pretty straight course.
Yeah.
Oh, that's...
Not that anybody can read that.
Pretty cut and dry, kicking the homestead out, solving that up. Armond Peace remains under a filter.
I wasn't here. I may have cut this out of this.
There's no one here, though?
He was here earlier, but after he closed the hearing, most of the thought he was done.
Oh, he left? I'll read in for the record the letter we received from our engineer on this matter. Dear Chairman Corey and Lysander Planning Board members, I have completed my review of the final plat for the above referenced final subdivision prepared by Warren Remy surveying dated June 17, 2024. The plat as presented appears to meet all of the town and Lysander code requirements. I would not be opposed to the planning board approving the final plat at this time. I'm not going to crawl in there. I'm not going to crawl in there.
That's red.
It's red?
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions regarding this? I think it's very simple and straightforward.
Yep.
Meets the codes. All right, findings. An environmental assessment form indicates that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. There is a letter on file from Alieager, the town engineer, dated 12 September 2024 that has been made part of the public record. This application did not meet the criteria for review and recommendation from the Onadaga County Planning Board. This action is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, this action is consistent with the town's current zoning records. This action will cause no adverse effects on the public health, safety and welfare in the neighborhood or district. Make the following resolution. Resolve that having reviewed the minor subdivision application of Michael Bartuszuski and Daniel Watson as defined on a map dated June 17, 2024, prepared by Warren Remy surveying for property located at 8188 Dog Harbor Road, tax map number 034 dot dash 01 dash 16, Plainville, New York is hereby approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, so moved. Resolve that in granting a subdivision to Michael Bartuszuski and Daniel Watson for property located at 8188 Dog Harbor Road, Plainville, New York, the planning board invokes its right to impose a fee of $250 per lot for one lot in lieu of land for the development of parks, playgrounds, recreation or open lands areas in the town. We will vote no on this because of the existing home will be remaining under, existing, remaining land will be under air calls. All those in favor? All those voting no?
No.
Who seconds that?
Do we second it?
Second.
Yep. State law states that the applicant shall file the final plat in the Onadaga County Clerk's office within 62 days from the date of the final approval or such approval shall expire. The applicant shall also file one copy of the final plat in the Lysander Clerk's office. I was going to say I'll get it afterward. Next item is Timberbank, major subdivision.
Al's letter and the county findings are in the front folder of that.
Jason's letter.
Or, excuse me, Jason Hoy's letter.
Do I have a copy of that?
Yes.
I got a piece of that.
Have it, have it.
I wish I could have Jason to come up.
Okay, before we get started, I have two letters, no, one letter, I'll read the two of them.
And there's county findings as well?
Pardon?
There's county findings as well?
Oh, yeah. I'll read the county findings first. I won't read all the introductory stuff. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Onadaga County Planning Board recommends the following modifications to the proposed action prior to local board approval of the proposed action. The applicant must provide an adequate wastewater disposal plan and appropriate sewer approvals must be obtained from Onadaga County Department of Water Environment Protection. Additionally, any extension of the public wastewater infrastructure must be approved by Onadaga County Health Department and Onadaga County Department of Water Environment Protection prior to or as a condition of municipal approval. The board offers the following comment. The town is encouraged to consider revisiting the full build environmental assessment, which is now 18 years old, to reflect the current site and community conditions and the guide future build-out planning. Would we end up, if we move forward with approval on this, should we add to the conditions we already have? This question about the Onadaga County water hookup and stuff?
Yeah, I don't see a problem adding that in, that they, the developer provide a letter of capacity from Onadaga County Water Environment Protection.
They have not gotten one yet?
They have not gotten one yet. Then how long ago did you submit that?
So the county has 45 days to respond. We submitted it 133 days ago. Emily Prokopio, who was doing the capacity analysis, had left, left. So I got an email, actually this morning, this afternoon, that they have replaced Emily. So they have the letter drafted and we should have it within the next couple of days. But they apologized that they were almost 90 days late now.
We should add that as a condition of the receipt of that letter. What exactly is that letter?
It says the capacity assurance for the wastewater treatment.
Have they given any indication as to what the letter's going to say?
It should have plenty of capacity because in the initial design, it was designed for 665 units plus additional land. We're rolling through that.
Yeah, but, okay, but that's... That was based on 18 years ago. I mean, since.
Yes.
The county has picked up thousands and thousands of additional gallons a day. So I would imagine that regardless of what was approved or considered particularly by this board, 18 years ago is necessarily still under the same consideration with the county regarding the capacity of the treatment plant. I don't know where the treatment plant, where the, this is going to Farver Road, I assume.
Yes. So I've looked recently actually at their outfall numbers and inflow reporting, just for another project, Melton Farm specifically. Their flow, so their inflow is less than 50% of the design capacity and their VOD inflow right now is tracking at about 73% of design capacity.
So that plat you're saying is about three-quarter capacity for?
From a VODs.
And what's the hydraulic capacity?
They're less than 50%.
Less than 50%.
Yeah. From a flow capacity standpoint.
I will, I'll read the letter from Jason Hoy, the town of Van Buren, town engineer, who has been serving as our engineer on this project because of the possible conflict that Al has given his employers to follow this project. Dear Planning Board members, the town of Lysander requested Van Buren's assistance in reviewing the design documents for Timberbank's Phase 4, Section 10, due to CHA Solutions being the project designer as well as Lysander's designated engineer. To date, we have received construction drawings dated July 18, 2024, stormwater pollution prevention plan dated May 2024. It is our understanding that the planning board is considering the subdivision of Phase 4, Section 10. Based on the above referenced documents, there are, there is not an engineering concern with the proposed subdivision lot layout. A full review of drawings and the SWIP will be completed as supporting documentation is received for construction drawing approval. So given where we stand with this, if we move forward with approval, we will place conditions on that approval that reflect the engineer's letter. In other words, I will not sign any final plat maps until we have met those conditions and seen those documents. And no occupancy will be issued to home, people who buy homes until the town has signed off on utilities and approved on the others. So those conditions would be placed on.
I have a couple of concerns, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I think Jason's letter is okay, but if he were here, I would be asking the same kind of questions I normally ask Al. Is the plan that he's seen consistent with what was originally approved 18 years ago? And certainly the question of the SWIP needs to be reviewed in some detail with some kind of feedback to us. And the water and sewer thing, again, it's been 18 years and the why it's been in since then, has that flow of both of those things still valid from an 18-year-ago approval? I guess what I'm saying is I'm not comfortable going ahead with this without hearing those answers from an engineer who is not compromised. I would trust Al implicitly, but we can't. And I just don't feel that we're ready to move ahead.
I think it's a good comment and I suppose in the future when we have to outsource technical review, we should ask the reviewer to attend our meetings for the six.
Jason added conflict to it, it's already been mentioned one of those kids.
Okay, well, we should have to do something to address this concern because I agree with him that, you know, we're going to have questions on technical matters that were reviewed by the engineer. We don't, we don't have an opportunity to get a response to those questions, I guess. I mean, to one of the questions, is this consistent with what was originally, I think what he described, it may be consistent, but it's not identical to what was presented 18 years ago, is that correct?
It is.
That's correct.
Okay.
No, the road alignment changed.
The road alignment changed and there may be one less lot?
Oh, okay.
I think they moved some density around. I think there was more low or, yeah, low-density lots and they put more medium-density lots in the section than what was originally.
Okay, so it certainly falls in the category, it's consistent with it, maybe even closer than what I thought. I thought, I thought you mentioned that there were some modifications from what was originally presented years ago. I agree with the sewer thing. I mean, I don't know about the water. I suppose Aqua could start to run out of water, but personally, I think that there's a greater risk of development in our township related to whether or not the wastewater can be handled in the future, particularly peak loading and storm events. But I would not mind waiting on approval of this unless there was some other reason for hardship until we get that letter from the county and maybe can present our question, the questions that have been raised to Jason and get him to respond.
I don't know what anyone else thinks.
How do you guys feel about it? Is there a timing hardship?
So preliminary plat would be desired solely so that way they can start marketing the lots. As you know, parade of homes is, I'm not sure exactly the dates of parade of homes, but they anticipate a large interest due to parade of homes in Timberbanks. And I think all of your concerns would have to be addressed before the final plat is signed anyway, if it's a condition. So I don't know how holding up preliminary plat approval would hurt the board or not.
What's the name of your parade of home?
It's before the next meeting.
They haven't received preliminary plat back in 2007, but we can make this resolution for preliminary plat. Preliminary plat was done for the full 600 some odd units.
Can you market the property based on that preliminary plat?
So I think what it allows them to do is to know that they are going to have lots in this configuration that the planning board would approve. Again, as Jason states in his letter, there'll be two additional shots at review of this, one at the town board level with construction drawing approval and a second chance at it with the planning board for final plat approval. So you have, you have another bite at the apple and the town board has a bite at the apple as well before now final approvals begin.
That would be a consideration for a resolution for preliminary plat with the developer understanding that they're at risk in the sense that if they advance on that, that there may be some changes depending upon the conditions that are added to that resolution. I don't know. Discussion.
The way this resolution is written, Karen, it says it's consistent with the approved preliminary plat.
Right.
That's the original one. And that it's written that any differences found are not significant to board would authorize the chairman to sign the final plat with the following conditions that we were talking about. So basically, we're saying there is an approved preliminary plat in place right now.
Correct.
For this, for this phase.
For the whole subdivision.
Yeah.
And they're asking for final plat approval. That's what this is.
No, this would not be final plat approval. Then we can't take, do final plat approval until the roads and utilities are settled.
That's one of the conditions.
Right. That's one of the conditions listed here.
Okay, so they're asking for?
They're asking for a final plat approval.
This resolution would normally read, have the chairman waive the final public hearing on the final plat and authorize him to sign it. But we decided to hold a public hearing since it is 18 years old.
I don't remember ever doing this for something of this size with the amount of things that are still up in the air.
Yeah, just table it.
It has not been our practice to grant conditional approval on lots. I believe in that. I believe we get things tied up and look at before we do it.
I would agree with you.
I think where that leaves us is right now, we're going to have to table this for now and bring it back up next month and hopefully we'll have the necessary documentation or individuals here that can address the concerns of the board.
And it can't be Al, so I think we need-
No, it's got to be Jason.
Jason Hoy is going to be to be here.
Yeah.
But he has a conflict on-
No, he's just, yeah, it's on-
We will put him on notice and he's going to have to be here. We will put him on notice and he's going to have to be here.
So not...
Since you have questions. All right.
So we close the hearing. We have to act within 62 days or an agreed-upon extension. So I'll just put them on the October agenda.
Put them on the October agenda. Hopefully we can get this all...
So there's a... The final plat will not be filed within 62 days. They don't even have contract drawing approval from the town board, so this infrastructure has not been constructed. So that's where I think the confusion is, is they are really asking for approval of an amended preliminary plat that allows for the changes in road alignment and density in this section of the development. So I don't know as we are in a position... we would be in a position at our October meeting to approve a final plat for this simply because the map can't be filed... the map can't be filed within 62 days because the infrastructure hasn't been constructed. So really, I think this would be, if we pass any resolution tonight, it would be a resolution approving the modified preliminary plat as presented for the lot layout with final plat approval being held until the town board approves the contract drawings for the subdivision and the infrastructures installed and dedication taken by the town board. So...
Well, I would be okay with that. It's just we got to make sure that that's what's being requested. It's the request for an amendment to a preliminary plat approval, which was granted 18 years ago.
Correct.
Okay.
I believe that is the only thing that we would be in a position to consider at this time simply because the infrastructure hasn't been constructed. So they're not going to meet the 62-day deadline and are just going to have to come back for another resolution for final plat approval once the infrastructure is constructed and the town board has taken dedication of the roads and utilities.
Well, we shouldn't... yeah.
Does that make sense?
We should have a different resolution.
I mean, so I think a resolution could read the preliminary plat dated... the revised preliminary plat dated 7/18/2024 is acceptable from a subdivision design standpoint contingent on whatever... on the county findings being addressed, the engineering engineers' completed review and documentation from Onondot County Water and Environmental Protection and Aqua that there's Aqua sewer water capacity to serve these 44 lots that are being... that the preliminary plat is being modified for.
And if that is the resolution, I would ask more specifically, what are the modifications from this drawing from what was approved 18 years ago? The resolution is to grant an amendment to a previously approved plan.
Roadway configuration. So the roadway configuration is very slight.
I mean, but how significant? I mean, yeah, so the roadway's changed, but...
Very minor.
Okay, just curve radiuses or width or...
The town road design standards have changed since the approval. Previously, you required the concrete gutters and now it's asphalt pickup curves. And then there were slight changes to the radio of the roads. You'll approve that and increase safety.
Okay, so the modifications have been made in order to meet current code that was not in place 18 years ago.
Exactly.
But we need to hear Jason Hoy tell us that. We can't get it from Al.
I think that's where Jason is going with the letter in that he's... looks at the subdivision is what he references.
Yeah, because he already agreed.
Yeah, the subdivision piece of it is what he was okay... is the one thing that he's okay with, as I recall in his letter.
Yeah, he says that there is not an engineering concern with the proposed subdivision lot He is fine with the layout as presented.
That's the way I interpret it.
Yeah. Because he's looked at the construction drawings, he's looked at the SWP, and, you know, he's looked at the map, checked that. The only thing he's looking for is...
Actually, what he says is to date we have received. He doesn't really say that he's even looked at them.
He says there's no engineering concerns with the subdivision layout though, which
Unfortunately, when you read this letter, he does say a full review of drawings and the SWP will be completed as supporting documentation is received for construction drawing approval.
Right, construction drawings are at the town board level.
Well, if we get to that point, we can make a condition on that. But we need to hear that this is consistent with what was approved 18 years ago and if there is a difference, what those differences are. And we need to know that the water and sewer and all the rest of it are not impacted by what's happened since, including the construction of the Y. We got to hear that from an engineer. I'd love to have Al be able to do that, but he can't.
So what you are suggesting is that we can't even do a conditional preliminary plat at this stage. Is that right?
Well, unless you want to write it the way Al started to write it in one point here, it doesn't do anything more than talk about the original plan being laid out in a certain manner, but it isn't exactly the same. So I don't know. I can write it, but maybe you can't. But I'm certainly not happy with what I think we would have approved.
No, we can't do that.
And we can't condition it with a whole bunch of conditions that involve the responses from the person that is functioning as our town engineer in this case.
You down on agree?
All you can do is ratify the preliminary plat that was reviewed in 2006 and if it's consistent, like Jason's letter indicated. You're just ratifying the preliminary plat.
What we do know from the discussion is what has changed from that is some of the roadway out in order to conform with new code. And some of the lot sizes have been changed. The area is the same. It's all within that, right?
Yeah, it's the density.
So could approving the preliminary... the adjusted preliminary plat, the old preliminary plat, I don't know why that would be relevant if this is a new preliminary plat that you're approving. And then as far as capacity concerns, all of those would be addressed prior to final plat. And as Al said, the treatment plant is at 50% inflow and then BOD is 75%. 44 lots certainly isn't going to push it over that threshold. You're looking at Melvin Farms, which has significantly more lots. And there was no concern there for wastewater treatment plant capacity. It's just a matter of Amelie left Aqua, so no one was doing it. That's the only reason they haven't got us the letter. And all the risk would be on Mr. Albert Eche.
Well, in a sense, I do apologize to you in that you're being held up, one, because our technical reviewer is not here and, two, the county has not forwarded a letter in 140 days when they should have. So, you know, you're looking at going, gee, you know, we're here and maybe the municipalities didn't come to the game prepared to play, and that might be the case. So in that case, I guess there's some error on our part. But at the same time, I'm confused right now what you're asking for and what it means. You need... you're asking for an amendment to a preliminary plat that was approved. If you don't get this amendment tonight, what's... what is it... what is at risk? I mean, so come the 19th and you want to market these lots. Does it prevent you from being able to market these lots?
Well, if we market these lots and then we come back... You're saying your word. We could come back and you could say, we don't like this configuration and on these lots that we've marketed, taken deposits on, could change.
I think it would be hard for us to do that in the sense that you have preliminary plat approval and you're telling us...
But we don't have preliminary plat approval on this specific place. It is slightly modified from the previous, so there's a lot of risk associated. I don't believe that you would... we would come back and you would tell us to completely change the lot configuration without that preliminary plat approval. There's a lot of risk for us because you could...
All your concerns, you basically deal with the final plat. They're all addressed before the final plat approval. It shouldn't be an issue with a preliminary plat approval with conditions. Do you agree with that?
Not entirely because until I hear it from the person who was responsible for the engineering for the town.
But we're not approving anything.
Well, if you can write it in a different manner than what was written there.
Well, it wouldn't be this... it wouldn't be that for sure.
Yeah. And if you can write it the way that does what they want and doesn't put us in a bind, it's fine.
Yeah, because the resolution should not in any way mention the chairperson signing final plats or anything.
Correct.
It should basically say...
The preliminary plat, the modified preliminary...
Here I approve a preliminary... a modified preliminary plat, dah dah dah, with the following condition.
Correct.
I'm taking the real short route.
Yes.
And we have those conditions. So that would give... they'd still have to come back next month and with our engineer, et cetera, and get those questions answered, but at least we could move forward. Or they would be in a position to say, this basic layout has received preliminary approval. I'm not uncomfortable with that.
If you can write it in a way that doesn't have what's in that proposal.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so this is the way I would word it. You guys speak up if you have anything else. But I would word it as the Planning Board has reviewed the preliminary plat for Timberbanks, Phase 4, Section 10, dated July 18, 2024.
Prepared by CHA.
Prepared by CHA with the following conditions. And then read off your conditions and we'll have... we'll come back next month to address those conditions and answer any questions and we'll get Jason here next month.
Does the resolution have to mention that this is an amendment to something previous? Is there a legal problem if there's two preliminary plats approvals?
That's why you called it an amended preliminary plat.
So it means in the resolution...
We're amending approved.
All right. You want to read the conditions, Jack?
Well, the conditions I have is a full review of the drawings and the SWP to be completed as supporting documentation is received for construction draw... well...
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Drawing review. Receipt of the capacity certification level.
Letters from WEP and Aqua.
WEP and Aqua. And the other one that we had was no certificates of occupancy to be issued until such time that the roads and utilities have been accepted by the town board.
Which doesn't apply to get the final plat. Yeah, so those are the two...
Because then we're going back to the other one.
Yeah, those are the two conditions that would be applicable at this time because it's not a final plat.
Correct.
It's just not... they are not in a position to be asking for final plat approval, isn't it?
So basically, it's the first one I read and the certification letter, silver. The first one I read would include having the engineer here to answer the questions because it's his final review.
Yes.
So that would cover your concern.
Which would... which include the consistency with what was approved before and the water and sewer problems because of what's happened afterwards, like the Y.
Well, the question, not the problem.
Yeah, but I've got to hear that from him, so that's got to be in there.
All right. Well, that's what these certification letters are saying, the capacity from the sewer and the water, the rest. You have that, Karen?
Yes, thank you, but a gentleman has a question.
Early on, wasn't there some traffic information still outstanding as well?
That would be part of the construction drawing review from the February. That would be the town board. Correct, I mean, the planning board would certainly be...
Would we give a...
It's already read.
You have that, Karen?
I do. So we just need a second.
Can you read that back?
The Planning Board has reviewed the amended preliminary plat dated 7/18/2024, prepared by CHA with the following conditions: A full review of the drawings and the SWP to be completed as supporting documentation is received for construction drawing approval and provide a capacity letter from WEP and Aqua.
Now, did you in the beginning say the Planning Board has reviewed?
Mm-hmm. The amended preliminary plat.
Somewhere we got to say we approve this amended preliminary plat.
And the preliminary plat is hereby approved.
With the following conditions.
The preliminary plat is hereby approved with the following conditions.
Correct, okay.
I will make that resolution as run by Karen.
Does everybody still agree that we need to have Jason Hoy here at the meeting?
Yes, he will be here at the next meeting. And if it wasn't for the conflict, he would have been here tonight. We thought we were doing something more simpler. We ended up... we have a motion. We have a second.
Motion by Steve, second by Matt. So all in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, saying so more. Well, I'm not sure.
And I don't want anybody to think that I'm opposed to the project. And I don't want anybody on the board to think that I'm opposed. I just think there's a right way to do things.
Let me get all this paperwork straightened. Next item on our agenda, minor subdivision stump musters.
Can we use Skiggo first, please?
Pardon?
Can we use Skiggo by any first?
He's representing both, so.
And we're doing that first.
And we're doing that first.
We're, we're doing the one on the bottom.
The one you got in your hand right now. It's Stego.
Stego.
And that's what's green here.
Okay.
You ready to get Stego out?
Yeah.
What is it, something there?
No, it's a, it's a amendment to the site plan.
Good?
Go ahead.
Julian Clark with Plumlee Engineering here representing Stego Winery. Joe Maravito, the owner of Stego Winery, is also here. Many years ago, Stego got approval to build a winery and tasting room on their property at 9272 Plainville Road. They constructed a facility, have been operating since that time. They are now, would like to build a pavilion just to the north of their tasting room and winery for when they have large events. They've been putting up tents and they'd rather not have the tents all the time. They want a pavilion in. So they're here tonight to propose a 4,800 square foot pavilion. And I provided some drawings of the pavilion for the application.
And this board reviews this because?
It's an amendment to the original site plan.
What was the tent part of the original site plan? Was a tent pad or anything like that part of the original site?
Well, that's down.
No, I think it's just, I think it's kind of, as operations have been flowed. But the winery is up and running, it's got great fields here, great fields there. He's in a hurry to leave now because he's got a wine event.
We don't want to hold anyone.
So what's-
With the code?
It's with the code, it's, it's pretty straightforward. From a parking standpoint, there will be some grass parking when they do have events and the, and the place is full. But we've done that for other facilities in the town. Specifically, the most recent one is Timberbanks for Permissions. We did allow some street side on grass parking for that in the event that it was needed. This would be a similar situation. This is an open air pavilion, so it's not like it's a, a four season per se event place. So snow won't necessarily be a problem for, for grass parking in the wintertime. It seems like it's a, a pretty straightforward approval. They've obviously been doing events already and putting tents up and we haven't had any issues or complaints. I don't see where this is a significant change to what they've already been doing other than they're actually putting up a permanent building rather than having a tent.
Would there have been any issues that this was originally proposed when they got their original site plan approval?
Nothing I can think of. Yeah, they're way under unlocked coverage. This part of the project doesn't disturb more than an acre. There was an existing barn in that location before that they have torn down. So it's not necessarily an increased impervious area. It's a, you know, just a continuation kind of what they've already been doing, but with a permanent building or a permanent pavilion rather than a pad.
Is there anything that you can anticipate as future modifications down the road? Not that they won't happen, but I mean, is there anything planned? Is there anything you're, you see on the horizon at this point?
Not at this time. I mean, this is seating for up to 120. It's like sort of a smaller size gathering place for a lot of the wedding, you know, places are a little bit larger than that. We found a niche with 25 to 100 person events. I like the size. For those of you who've seen the property, we try to keep it pretty clean and neat. You know, I'm not really anticipating a lot of grass parking, to be honest with you, because like the, the restaurant part of what we do is, is no longer going to function that. We're going to be a winery and a tasting room with some retail and really just going to do the same amount of, of work that we've done before, just in a more suitable location. It's not a tent. So I don't, I don't anticipate, you know, any further growing or any other building around those, those structures at all.
So you wouldn't anticipate having enough cars that they'd be parking along the road?
No. No, not at all.
I guess the only other thing I could think of was east of here, there was a similar operation, what was it, Chitango in that area?
The one in Casanova.
Grew very large all at once and they were surrounded by neighbors who were really upset with the noise.
Yeah. I think the, and I'm familiar with it where, I think the scale of what we're doing is, that's not my intention really at all. I mean, we have found a niche in this, in the size of business that we're doing. And for those people who know me, this isn't my primary, you know, work. So I mean, this is meant, you know, to, you know, be a farm winery and maintain the sort of atmosphere that we got there.
Can we restrict the capacity in any way, either by number of cars or parking or?
I mean, you could restrict, I mean, the occupancy restriction really is a restriction. So the occupancy would be no more than 120 because that's what they're seating for. But that's a, really is a, a building code restriction, more so than a planning board restriction.
How about, how about lighting? Any, any particular lighting that's going to be?
There's no additional exterior lighting than what's around the park. And while, like I said, we're not anticipating more business because we're not running a restaurant and this. Like the restaurant is, is basically going to be a lounge where we're doing retail, wine and merchandise and so forth. The, the sort of functions that we were doing, it's going to be in that space. So we're not, we're going to be using the same parking. I don't really anticipate the grass parking, to be honest with you. I mean, we've not had to do that so far in anything we've done. So there's no really further exterior lighting plan at all.
I'll, I'll read the engineer's letter for the record. Dear Chairman Corey and Lysander Planning Board members, I have completed my review of the site plan for the above referenced project prepared by Plumlee Engineering dated September 2024 for the final revision date of September 12, 2024. A SWP and a construction CD permit will not be required as the total soil disturbance will be less than one acre. I have no further engineering related comments at this time and would not be opposed to the planning board approving the site plans this time. Make the following resolution. Resolved that the planning board, having followed the prescribed secret procedures and having received no comments to the contrary, hereby designates itself as lead agency for Stargill Vineyards LLC, 9272 Plainville Road, Bolinsville, New York, controlled site use application.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. I'll do the short form secret. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supply? No. Public or private wastewater treatment? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies, et cetera? No. Will the proposed action result in increase in potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Resolved that having reviewed the secret regulations and determined this is an unlisted action and having reviewed the short environmental assessment form and finding no significant or adverse impacts resulting from Stargill Vineyards LLC, 9272 Plainville Road, Bolinsville, New York, controlled site use application, the planning board hereby issues a negative declaration. Have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, staying so moved. Resolved that having reviewed a site plan is defined on a map dated September 2024, prepared by Plumlee Engineering, associated with the application of Stargill Winery for property located at 9272 Plainville Road, Bolinsville, New York, for a controlled site use to allow the construction of a pavilion slash covered patio to their existing vineyard and there being no findings or grounds for decision contrary to the laws and regulations that Tom Lysander under our county or state of New York. The site plan is hereby approved. I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Should we have the 120 limit as part of the resolution?
Well, it's going to go through the building authority.
The building code.
The codes will handle that.
That works for me.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying so moved.
Thank you.
Picking grapes Saturday morning.
Our hands light work.
All right. Next item, minor subdivision stump busters Inc. Hi, you.
Hi. I'm the authority representing Stump Busters and I guess Upstate Autos. Upstate Autos owns the property at 9073 Swego Road on 48. About 14 acres. He's proposing to subdivide off five acres for Stump Busters to purchase and then they will, Stump Busters will develop the five acres. Doug reached, prepared a final subdivision plan that I believe is in compliance with the town zoning. So we're here tonight to present the subdivision plan. So two lots up each.
You're, you're cutting lot two A out of what was two A and three?
No, they're making lot three. They're creating lot three for what was-
Two A.
Two A.
It's from the element?
Yes. Yeah.
So lot three and two A are one parcel right now?
Correct.
Okay.
So where does this lot connect to a road?
Route 48 right through here.
It's got 250 foot of road front.
What's the dash line across? West of the road.
I think that's the setback.
It's a 100 foot setback or something.
Yeah, that's a 100 foot setback. Oh, yeah, it's from the 100 foot setback from right away line. Yeah.
So, so is that a, is that a restriction?
It's actually supposed to be 140 foot from the center line of 48 for the building.
Yes, sir. The GPS, 100 feet.
So it's 100 feet from the edge of the right away, so it's-
140 feet from the center line.
From the center line, okay. It's an 80 foot road?
Shaking.
Okay.
Then that's what it is. We might have to have Doug revise that because I don't think there's a 80 foot there. The pavement, the paved area, there's not 40 foot of pavement on that side of the road.
Well, it'd be 80 foot right away to right away.
No, but the, the front yard setback is measured from the-
Center line.
Or from the center line. So if it was 140 feet.
It's 100 foot from the right away and it's an 80 foot wide road. That'd give 140 feet, right?
You know, I don't know if that right away is 80 feet.
And it's not really related enough. The question is, what's the dot, the dash line?
This one?
Yeah.
I think it is meant to be the, the setback line. However, I don't believe he shows the front yard setback line correctly on the subdivision.
It's really irrelevant to this subdivision.
Correct.
Yeah, all right.
Any other questions at this time?
Is there anything about something, a subdivision adjacent to the state land? I mean, three rivers. It's a parcel adjacent to that. There's no restrictions or anything that's relevant to that, right?
No.
Okay.
I make the following resolution. Resolved that the planning board, having followed the prescribed secret procedures and having received no comments to the contrary, hereby designates itself as lead agency for Stump Busters, Inc., 9071-9073, Swego Road, Bolinsville, New York, minor subdivision application. I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying so moved. I'll do the short form secret. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Proposed action impair the character or quality of existing community? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? No. Public or private wastewater treatment? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard for environmental resource or human health? No. No. Make the following resolution. Resolved, that having reviewed the seeker regulations, determined this is an unlisted action, and having reviewed the short environmental assessment form and finding no significant or adverse impacts resulting from the Stumpbusters Inc., 9071-9073 Swigell Road, Bolinsville, New York, minor subdivision application, the planning board issues a negative declaration. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Resolved, that a public hearing be held at a date and time designated by the secretary on the application of Stumpbusters Inc. for a subdivision of property located at 9071-9073 Swigell Road, Bolinsville, New York, tax map number 021 dot dash 02 dash 28 dot 1, for development of two lots from approximately 12 plus or minus acres.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
So it'll be next month?
It will. It has to send it to county because of the control site use and it's in combination with minor subdivision. So hopefully they will hear it on a silver second.
The next and last item, again, this is a controlled site use for Stumpbusters.
Now's you can do the seeker.
Do we have anything?
Mm-hmm, there's a file. Oh, there's my monitor right here. You might want to file.
I got my safety vest if you want to borrow. I got my flash.
Okay, Julian?
Julian Clark with Plumlee Engineering, here at the Stumpbusters. We spoke about the subdivision of property by Upstate Autos. Stumpbusters is going to purchase the five acre parcel that's being created. They're going to build a new facility with an office of 2,400 square feet and a storage truck bay area of 6,000 square feet. We provided a site plan that I believe meets all the zoning requirements. Property is zone GB within the major highway overlay zone. We will need a water well. We will need a septic system. We will provide stormwater management design with the slip. With one driveway on Route 48, which we'll get a DOT permit for. We got a parking plan, tent spaces we show. They are proposing to have a gravel out back which will, they'll use to store equipment and materials. There will be outside lighting. We'll provide a photometric plan for that. Will the yard be fenced? Because that is kind of much in the plan. In order to be planning to do a document. He does want to sign. Is that a separate thing? We can do that as part of the site plan approval to provide details. I saw that when the light had signed, that may be problematic with our sign code. But we'll cross that bridge once he sends us some details on what he wants to do.
Is a gravel surface impervious?
It would be considered impervious surface and will lead you to be included in the water quantity and water quality control calculation. There'll be abs out off front. The gravel will just be in the back. More than acre.
What's the allowable lot cover?
30%.
What's the?
This is, it's on there in the bottom right hand corner. I'm sorry, 20%.
What counts?
All impervious surface.
Everything, okay, the building, the asphalt.
What are you asking for about the contract?
This is just initial presentation. Just making sure you're comfortable before I spend a lot of time.
No, we're going to give ourselves a lead agency.
Which we've already done. Now it's just a matter of.
For this one?
Yes.
We got to do it for this one too.
Yeah, I did two separate resolutions, one for the subdivision and one for the third plan.
She gave us separate.
Okay. I don't know if we would have to do this because that would be segmentation. The action includes the subdivision and, and site plan review. So, so I think that would be segmentation if you did it twice. You're really looking at the subdivision. They're not going to subdivide the lot unless there's an approved site plan, right?
I would agree with you.
Right, if the deal falls through or he didn't get site plan approval, he's not going to purchase the lot. Yeah.
So the two seekers that you did, I'll just reword the first resolution.
I think I just did one seeker and?
No, you did one for the subdivision and one for the controlled site.
Yeah, you did one for each.
Because I thought the subdivision was standalone and then the controlled site, that could have been 10 years down the road.
It's a seeker that he's got here says subdivision in site plan. So he probably submitted the same seeker form for both applications. They submitted one when he submitted the package. And then I submitted one that had everything together. That's what happened.
Okay. So basically we'll just modify what we did and we won't do it.
Yeah, I don't know if we have to do it.
All right.
Amen.
Any more questions at this time, gentlemen? We'll get plenty of opportunity right now. Thank you, Julian.
Karen, what were we talking, this doesn't need a special use permit or anything, right?
No, at first we did a special use permit, but we're going to have it fall under a warehouse. Offices allowed, warehouses allowed without a special use permit.
All right.
You were talking about outdoor sales at first, and that would not fly.
Thank you.
Sales? Because he's a landscaper as well?
I'm going to talk to you afterwards. All right, that concludes our agenda for tonight. I will adjourn the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, gentlemen.
All right.